Welcome. Tonight's gonna be the Kingsburg City Council Regular Agenda Meeting tonight for May 7th. Tonight's invocation is gonna be given by Pastor John Dostal of the Kingsburg Concordia Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, bless those who hold the office of government here in Kingsburg, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them to use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare through your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We'll call tonight's meeting order. Madam Clarice, can we get a roll call, please?
House Member Sondra.
Present.
House Member Colton.
Here.
House Member North.
Here.
House Member Smith.
Here.
Mayor Purcell.
Here.
First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the agenda. Entertain motions.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next is an exciting time. We're gonna have some presentations and informational reports. Tonight's, we're gonna be introducing the 2025 Swedish Queen and her court. You guys are ready? Come on up. As you come up, if you could introduce yourself, give us your name and tell you who you are, just so everybody at home can hear you. Come on.
Good evening, members of the Kingsburg City Council. My name's Samaras Olivia Odom, and I will be officially crowned as the 2025 Kingsburg Swedish Festival Queen, next Thursday at the traditional Swedish supper of pea soup and pancakes in downtown Kingsburg. I served on the Royal Court last year as an attendant, and I am extremely pleased to serve this year's queen. I want to thank the city council members and the city of Kingsburg for their support of the annual Swedish festival. And now, each member of the court will introduce herself.
Good evening, members of the Kingsburg City Council and city staff. My name is Allison Rogers, and I am extremely honored to have served as an attendant in the Royal Court in 2024 and now in 2025. There are many fun activities planned for this year's festival, and I want to extend a special invitation to the Friday evening ABBA Tribute Concert featuring the Lingonberries. I am the lead singer and am very much looking forward to singing all the iconic ABBA hits to bring out all the dancing queens in the audience. Welcome in.
Good evening, city council and community members. My name is Kaylee Reich, and I'm happy to serve as a member of the 2025 Royal Court for this year's Swedish Festival. I want to extend a huge tacso mikke, thank you so much to the council for their support of the cultural village, which will be located just outside the council chambers on Draper Street. It will be open all day on Saturday, and festival attendees can learn more about the Swedish culture and traditions, and children will be able to play Viking games. And don't forget the pancake breakfast at 7:00 AM, followed by the grand parade at 10:30 AM. Hope to see you all at the festivities.
For sure. Wouldn't miss it.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Charlotte Houseworth, and I am very much looking forward to serving as an attendant in the Royal Court at this year's Swedish festival. I want to thank the city, the council members, and all the volunteers who worked tirelessly to create a successful Swedish festival. I encourage everyone to dine with us at one or all of the three different made-from-scratch traditional Swedish food meals being served this year. Thursday's pea soup and pancake supper on Draper Street, Friday evening's smorgasbord in Coffee Pot Park, and the Saturday morning Swedish pancake breakfast also in Coffee Pot Park are available traditional dining options. As a bonus for each Swedish meal purchased, you get one ticket for the Swedish PLR bicycle drawing. The bicycles are on display next door to Svensk Boutique. Bon appetit.
I believe we have a representative from Assemblymember Macedo's office today.
Hello. My name is Rosalinda Alexander. I represent Assemblywoman Alexandra Macedo. She sent me down to honor the court. On behalf of the state of California, Assemblywoman Macedo proudly recognizes the members of the Kingsburg Swedish Festival Queens Court. As ambassadors of tradition, culture, and community pride, you are embarking on a meaningful year of service and leadership. May your reign be filled with purpose, grace, and lasting impact. Congratulations, and thank you for representing Kingsburg with honor and heart. The first certificate goes to Samaras Olivia Odom in recognition of your reign as the 2025 Kingsburg Swedish Festival Queen. Congratulations. Pardon moi. Presented to Allison Rogers. Presented to Kaylee Reich. Presented to Charlotte Houseworth. And then, Assemblywoman Macedo also wanted to recognize and present a certificate to the mayor, to Captain Brandon Purcell in recognition of your appointment, to the captain at the Fresno County Sheriff's Department. She just wanted to publicly acknowledge your service to both Kingsburg and the county. Thank you so much for all that you do. Congratulations.
Yeah, Gross, can you come up?
Okay. We'll do entro tre omelette. Entro tre omelette. Okay. More, you need to kinda, a little bit. I'll do one more. Three times a charm, you know. Okay, entro tre.
Very important tradition in our town, and we're very, very thankful to have you as our ambassadors doing that. Thank you very much. Next on our presentations. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight that we have our Kingsburg Cert team here tonight, part of them. We actually have thirty-one of them now, and so if we had them all here, I don't know if we'd have enough room, but... So the ones that you see that we're gonna be swearing in tonight are part of our Cert team, so just... ...the oath that you take, and you are a volunteer, and you're out there serving your community, and that's what you see here tonight, is that we just have a really good group of people here, and I think you've seen some of them out already. They're the ones that were doing traffic control for the 5K run. The car show, they're walking up and down the street, checking on people. They had a booth out there giving... ...and also, they're a big part of the fireworks show, and you know, it's a hot time of year, and they'll be out there. I know that they're out helping us treat some patients last year, and so it's just... The ones, the people that you see back here, they've all gone through CPR training. They're doing stop... We're gonna have ten members here tonight that are gonna take the oath to office, and I'd like to have them come forward.
Chief, if you're okay, I'm gonna list the names off that we have here.
Yes, I do have...
I just wanna take a second to say thank you to everybody that does Cert. This is a very important thing. It's pretty unique to our small town, too, and it's a great thing. The amount of effort you put in and the help for the community, we're very, very thankful. So tonight, we're gonna have Beatrice... Manuel Huerta, James Huerta Jr., Araceli Vasquez, Jasmine Vasquez... Daniel Huerta, and Elijah Vasquez. Her right hand, and you'll repeat after her.
When you are oath of office, so please repeat after me. I state your name. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will with true faith and allegiance.
That I will with true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
You guys wanna just gather here? We'll get the council.
Get a picture? Can you see, you can get us with the standing in the back.
Oh, wireless.
Get in the picture.
Do you guys, will you go to Robert? Yeah, just a little bit. It's a little lopsided here. We actually have two families in this building. All right. One, two, three. Not just Swedish, sorry, Chris.
Yeah, congratulations. Congratulations, yes.
Okay, next up, we have our public comment. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest to the public within the council's jurisdiction, which are not already on the agenda this evening. It is the policy of the council not to answer these questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than three minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council as each item is brought up for discussion. So we'll open tonight's public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to come up to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and include a recommendation from staff and shall be acted upon in one motion of the council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive the full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. Tonight on the consent calendar, we have items one through five. Do we have any members of council that would like to pull any items tonight? Any members from the public or staff like to pull any items from consent? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain motions for the consent calendar.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our regular calendar tonight. Item six, which is consideration of memorandum of understanding with the County of Fresno ordinance relating to infectious material. Staff report by building official AJ O'Connell. Welcome, AJ.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. AJ O'Connell, building official. In December 2022, City of Reedley Code Enforcement Officer Jesselyn Harper discovered an active and unregulated bio lab mere steps away from the Reedley Civic Plaza, public parks, schools, and neighborhoods. The response to this discovery revealed the lack of suitable state and federal regulations to address these types of facilities. Existing state and federal laws do not provide adequate oversight for these bio labs, thus leaving local leaders to develop solutions and standards for their operation. The County of Fresno Board of Supervisors recognized and undertook this charge and passed ordinance 2024-002 establishing permitting requirements, inspection standards, and suitable superintendents of these bio lab facilities. In a gracious gesture, the county has offered a memorandum of understanding to the city of Kingsburg to enforce this ordinance within our jurisdiction. Under the agreed MOU presented tonight, should a similar situation present itself here in Kingsburg, city code enforcement staff would be able to request assistance from the Fresno County Department of Public Health if an illicit bio lab is to be discovered. The Department of Public Health professionals would then provide operational management of the situation, ensuring that any public health threats are mitigated. The city code enforcement division would still play a role in ensuring the public nuisance is abated in partnership with the PH. City staff is recommending that the mayor and city council approve Resolution 2025-26, approving the MOU with Fresno County, and waiving the first reading and introducing ordinance 2025-03, adding the Fresno County Infectious Materials Ordinance by reference into our municipal code. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Additionally, Joe Prado, Assistant Director of Fresno County Department of Public Health, is in attendance and can answer any questions that you folks may have. Thank you.
Thank you, AJ. Have a council discussion? Any questions for AJ? No? Open it up to the public, if anybody from the public would like to speak? Okay. Well, that was easy. Bring it back to council discussions. Any other, or final thoughts or motions?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to extend our thanks to Fresno County for their work on this, as AJ mentioned, and AJ's been the lead for city staff here, so pretty smooth process all the way through, and hopefully this is something that we never need to use, but always better to be prepared. So, thank you.
Okay, great. This is a, this is an action item. Do we have motions to adopt this MOU?
Do we need to do one or two?
Two.
Two.
Okay. Would you like...
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then we have a second item, a second action item with this.
I'll make the motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance 2025-03, adding chapter 8.28 to Title VIII of the Kingsburg Municipal Code relating to infectious materials.
That was great.
I'll take that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, AJ. Thank you, Mr. Prano. Next, we'll move on to item number seven, the Independence Day Celebration Discussion. Staff report by city manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you're aware, the community has traditionally celebrated Independence Day with a community event on July 3rd hosted by the Kingsburg District Chamber of Commerce. During the April 16th regular city council meeting, council member North, who is our liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, reported that the Chamber Board of Directors voted at their April 8th meeting to not host the July 3rd Independence Day celebration in 2025. As such, staff is presenting an overview of relevant considerations to guide the city council's decision on how to proceed with the fireworks display in 2025. Included in your packet are the firework program options that were originally provided to the Chamber of Commerce. Staff has confirmed with the vendor, Pyro Spectaculars, that they can still provide a show on July 3rd for the originally quoted rates. Staff is seeking discussion and potential direction regarding the fireworks event with the following considerations. Cost and operations. For 2025, the chamber has approximately $14,000 in their fireworks fund. The city annually contributes $5,000. Music for the event is provided for approximately $1,500, which means the council would need to allocate an additional $8,000 to cover 2025 costs. There's also the consideration of cost for future years. Coordination of the event. City staff would be responsible for organizing event logistics, including working with the fireworks vendor, coordinating music, the invocation, singer for the National Anthem, as well as ordering trash cans, porta-potties, and other event-related activities. In addition, the city would be responsible for providing labor for parking, gated mission, and cleanup the day after the event, if we so choose to open the stadium. Alternatively, the city could partner with a nonprofit group that would provide the volunteers to staff the event, and in return would receive a portion of the revenue raised from parking concessions and gate entry fees in the form of a fundraiser. Public safety activities by our police and fire departments are not expected to change from a normal event year as they already provide support. Chamber of Commerce representatives have indicated their willingness to work closely with the city or other group that would take on the responsibility of the Independence Day event. Previous year events charged $5 per car for parking and $5 to enter the bowl, and the chamber provided the following breakdown of revenues for the 2024 event. There's a breakdown based upon vendors that participated, the $5,000 city contribution, independent donations, gated missions, and parking, for a total of just shy of $17,000. So this evening, staff again is seeking discussion and potential direction from the council regarding the Independence Day celebration for 2025. That concludes my report. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Council discussion on this?
I have a question on the vendors. The 875 that was, SS Chamber charged a flat fee to participate, was that like per, like food truck, or was that like one fee for Fresno Street Eats?
Per vendor is what's being indicated to us from the audience.
And how many vendors were last year? We only had about six vendors, and then we had a toy vendor that was out there. The vendors were food vendors? Yes, food vendors, snow cones, things like that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I kinda am sad that this is even before us, but it is the task at hand, right? So here we are, and it's a little bit late, in my opinion, to be, you know, dealing with this, but it is the task at hand, and so I know that there are a lot of citizens that enjoy that fireworks show. It is probably something that people, citizens, and non-residents come and enjoy, and probably, I would imagine, that some families, you know, maybe grandparents and the kids get together and plan, you know, to attend that event. That said, you know, it is a big-ticket item, and somehow, some way, we need to figure out how we fiscally make that work, because going backwards every year on a fireworks show doesn't, I don't think that's sustainable. So somehow, some way, we have to figure out how to shore up that potential loss, whether it's with general fund money, or whether it's a partnership with some other, maybe service-related group, you know, just throwing out different groups, Lions Club, Knights of Columbus, I mean, who knows, maybe Cert would like to partner and try to tackle that event if Chamber couldn't make it work for whatever reason. Maybe there is someone else that can make it work, so... I mean, I'd hate to see it go away this year at so late in the game, but going forward to next year, I think that's the real, for me, that's the real issue, because, you know, I like the traditions that we have here in Kingsburg, but they also have to make sense, and they have to be fiscally responsible. So, those are just my thoughts, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, for me, you know, I know the citizens here in Kingsburg really enjoy this event every July 3rd, including myself and my family, and a lot of, you know, a lot of people that I know get together and plan it out, you know, week ahead of time. Whose house we going to, or going down, we going down to the bowl, and I know in coordinating it, the staff has in here about maybe partnering with, with a group here in Kingsburg, some group, you know, sporting group, or... You know, I don't know, like you were saying, Knights of Columbus or somebody. I would think more of a sporting group here in Kingsburg that would wanna staff it, because I know Alex and I talked about it, it doesn't make sense for city staff to be down there working it, you know, to be paying city staff to be down there, so I think that's a good idea. I'd like to go, you know, approve this and go ahead with it, but I do believe we need to reach out to some of the... Somebody in, one of the groups in Kingsburg, probably sporting group, and they could potentially work in it, and, you know, get half the proceeds from the parking and the attendance, the entry for the fireworks, so that's my thoughts.
I, I do support moving forward with this, and I think it's very unfortunate that it's coming to us at this late in the game, because it makes it a lot harder to, to plan for it. But it does, it makes sense to partner with another group that's going to work with somebody that could... I, I think we need to, I personally think we need to tackle the parking a little differently. I think we need to, well, and maybe just see, if we partner with the group, see what they come back with, but it would make sense to me to charge more for parking. I don't know, there's quite a bit of money that, that is raised at the door, so I've been looking at how to recoup what we can from this, this year. I think there's a lot of things to consider. It looks like, based on gated missions, that there were well over a thousand people that went to the bowl. Was it $5 a ticket? So, it sounds like a lot of people are showing up. I know we have a whole lot of people that watch from home or park around, so I think there's a lot of things to consider in the timeframe, and... I mean, we're not gonna pay city staff to go do it, or, I mean, that's a lot to ask on a hot night. All of those things costing us money, but also, when we do partner, we're losing, we're not recouping all of that, because we're giving a, probably a high percentage, because they're doing all of the work, and then clean up the next day. So I don't know if it's worth having the bowl open. It's like we just do a show where people could go to the park, or, I don't know. I think we're gonna, if we partner with a group, we're gonna lose money, but if we don't partner with a group, we're losing money too, because we have to pay staff. We don't have the volunteers in the way that the chamber did. So, my thoughts. No solution?
Well, I think a lot of it's been said. I'm disappointed in the chamber for the late notice on this, if I'm being honest. But that being said, that is their right. They, they are here to make money, and if they don't think this is profitable for them, that's absolutely their right to walk away from it. That being said, this, when this came up before, when we were first notified of it, the considerations about reaching out to another organization or something did come up, and I have been talking to local organizations, and I know that the Kingsburg Sea Wolves are willing to work the bowl this year. They would have to, obviously, they're gonna wanna do a profit share of some sort with that, but I think that would just leave that up to the city manager to work out the details if you guys were fine with it. Because the way that I look at this is, this year, all I'm trying to do this year is make the fireworks happen. The only way that we're gonna make the fireworks happen is if we take a big loss here. And that, that is what it is. I think that's something that at least I'm willing to do for this year. I agree with council member Silva that this is probably not a sustainable thing in the future, or we're gonna have to come up with better solutions. But this year, we just don't have time. We're left holding the bag, and so we're gonna have to pay, or we're gonna have to decide to cancel it. I think there is a potential of recouping some costs if we partner with a group like the Sea Wolves. I know they have hundreds of families that are participating in that, and that's... I know they have hundreds of families that are participating in that, and that's, that's what it's gonna take. I think that the Chamber is very clear that this is a big event, this is a lot of work for them. So you're gonna need a lot of people, and they have the volunteers. There's a way to recoup some costs with that. If they wanted to open the bowl, they could work that, they could have all their volunteer time do that. And them being a nonprofit, I think that would work out. But I don't want to isolate it to just them. My suggestion would be, we're gonna eat the cost of the fireworks this year. It just is what it is. I, I would like to just authorize the city manager to work with any, any group that's willing to come forward. Probably gonna be Sea Wolves, but any group that would be willing to come forward and kind of give him a little bit of discretion, just because we're at a time, we're at a big time crunch to come up with what's the best possible option for the city on that. If, that would just be my suggestion, I'm just one member of council. But I think that they're a large enough organization that they could provide it. And more than anything else, all I really care about in this one is getting the fireworks to happen this year. We do have a significant amount of people that go down to the bowl. Like, a lot of those people are not from Kingsburg, those are not Kingsburg dollars that are coming into Kingsburg. I don't want to turn that away when we have that opportunity. But again, I'm open to any other suggestions or thoughts. If not, we can open it for public discussion. Do we have any members of the public that want to come speak on it? Go in once? No? Okay, then we'll bring it back to, bring it back to council for any final thoughts or direction. Staff?
I, I do want to say thank you to the Chamber for doing this for years, because like, it's like 113 that night. Like, nobody wants to be out there working hard, and I know their board is seven or eight people?
Nine.
Nine? Nine, and so thank you for doing that. And hopefully we can get a bigger organization with a lot more volunteers that can pull from those resources to pull this off.
Yeah, I think with more volunteers too, they can be more creative in what they offer. Like, they could even do their own concessions. I mean, yeah, there's food trucks, but maybe they can do their own concessions and be creative in how they can also raise funds, whether it be glow sticks or whatever. So I think, I think it, it may work out for the better, even though it's under these circumstances, so that's all I had.
Yeah, my big concern with this is staff time, realistically. Having staff come in, paying them overtime to stand out in 105-degree weather. That, that seems excessive to me as far as the use of city dollars, but.
Yeah, I think the Sea Wolves is the best group to, to do it also, because it's the biggest sporting group in Kingsburg. You know, my girls swam for many years, and a lot of parents, a lot of kids, so. But you were saying also maybe opening up to other groups, Brandon, you were thinking?
Yeah, I just, just to be completely fair to all organizations, I want to, you know, give, give people some time. This is a public meeting, so people can go back and look at this, or maybe some other organizations wants to come in. And I really, I don't know that we're gonna have time for this to keep coming back to council before the event. So that's why my, my direction would be to authorize the city manager, at his discretion, to work with the group that he feels is best for the event and for the city, for this year specifically, just because of the time crunch. And then, looking forward, we're gonna have to determine if this is still gonna happen, because I don't, I don't think we want to put $25,000 into this event every year. Do you have any comments?
No, I was, my recommendation was going to be that either we partner with a group, and I think we should open it up just for equity's sake, and let them present probably a short turnaround, you know, get something figured out by the end of this month, probably, hopefully, so that they have time to prepare and where we're. And if we can't come to some agreement with a group, or no group comes forward, then I think we would probably, my suggestion would be to just to close the bowl and have an aerial fireworks show, because I think we would, it would just be putting more money into it for us to have to pay staff overtime to go sit there. I don't even, I don't even know that we'd recoup, you know, what those costs would be. So I think those are the two reasonable options for this year. And, you know, hopefully, there will be a group, you know, that, that comes forward. And yeah, as you guys have all mentioned, you know, they can be potentially creative on how they raise funds, and, you know, we can negotiate a, you know, equitable, you know, cost share on, you know, probably gate and parking. And, you know, if they want to run concessions, and maybe that's, you know, theirs to, you know, do all the work and pay for the supplies, and reap the benefits from, from the fundraising, so. And then, hopefully, hopefully we get there, and we learn, learn some things, and then we can have a more pointed discussion about future years. Those are my thoughts.
Any other discussion?
I had one quick question that, that came to mind while Alex was talking. When we talk, I know, like, public works or cleanup overtime scenario, but would police presence, or ambulance, or fire, would that also be part of an overtime scenario? Or would that be just kind of, the police and fire are out already, so if there was something that they needed assistance with on that day, they would be willing to assist?
Yeah, so we, both chiefs budget for that, because there is some up-staffing that already occurs on, on 3rd of July, you know, both for the actual event, but then obviously festivities that occur around town afterwards. So I don't envision any additional resources there. I mean, the fire group, fire department works with the, the fireworks vendor. Fire vendor's been doing it for 25 or more years or something. They're very willing to work with us as well. They, you know, have a history with Kingsburg that they appreciate as well. So I, I don't view the public safety impact. You know, we are working a little bit through insurance, but I, I think I've got a solid response to that today, just because we haven't historically been responsible for any of that in the years past.
Okay. Thank you, nothing further.
This shows that there's $14,000 in the Chamber's fireworks fund. Is that, is that coming to this, coming back to the city?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, thank you guys for that. I know that that's not a guaranteed thing, so we do appreciate you guys giving that back to the city. That makes this a lot more palatable for us.
Other?
Would it be possible to maybe authorize the city manager to make the best decision for fiscally and for our community, whether it is working with an organization or making the decision to close the bowl and just do an aerial show, show this year?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that, if council is. I know we're gonna be giving you a lot of discretion in this one, but that's, that's why you're the city manager. The good news is we'll hold you accountable for it either way.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, honestly, I think if we can find a group that has the volunteers to do it, I think that that's probably the best choice, because that will return some of that money to us, whereas if we close the bowl, we get no money, right? And, you know, and then they'll get, you know, they'll have a fundraiser. I mean, regardless of what they make, they, they, they don't have any expenses. So it should be a fundraiser that is going to benefit then the community or that group, at least for this year. So, you know, I think it's a, it's an option, you know, that's worth pursuing for at least this year, and then, you know, we can see what, what comes from it.
Any other questions from council?
No, I argue with Alex, because there are a lot of cities that like to go down to the bowl, you know. I know a lot that like, like to do that, so if we can find somebody to partner with, I think that's a good thing.
Okay, I guess then I'll make a motion to give the city manager discretion to vet and choose a possible nonprofit to work with for the Independence Day, up to and including closing the bowl, if it doesn't make financial sense. Is that written? Yeah, that's my motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Now we'll move on to item eight, the Kingsburg Business Park Highway Commercial Sign and Lease Agreement. Staff report by city manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This hopefully is the culmination and final discussion on a project that's been occurring for about eight years now. Dating back to last year, though, the Finance Committee received an update in regard to the Business Park sign, which is now owned by the city, and provided direction to ensure that any possible improvement to the sign be covered by the cost of leases, including ongoing maintenance, utility costs, et cetera. The city's Economic Development Committee, during the September meeting, made recommendation to the Finance Committee to refurbish the existing sign without adding a digital component. This option was the least expensive of those explored, and involves the least amount of ongoing costs, including electricity cost, digital sign repair, and digital sign repair. On October 28th, 2024, the Finance Committee provided direction to staff to begin negotiating leases, to include the size and number of panels desired, length of leases, annual cost and security deposit, early termination language, and sign change and maintenance responsibility. So after several months, we have reached a near consensus on leases. And on April 28th of this year, the Finance Committee made a recommendation to the city council to approve the leases. City Attorney Mike Nolan has reviewed and approved the form of the leases, and so we're bringing this item to council prior to the execution of all leases by the tenants in anticipation of their approval and desire to begin the project as soon as possible. Each tenant that has not signed has verbally accepted their respective lease language and are awaiting final signatures from corporate. Our sign consultant has held prices for several months, but is concerned about potential increases, including tariffs on materials. Abby, can I go to PowerPoint? And I'll just kind of work through that. Yeah, at number eight there. Here, I can come and run it. Just use the mouse. So just some additional detail. So brief history, obviously, is the large sign that we're talking about. It was approved by the city's Architecture Review Committee in 2004, and was installed in 2005 by a private party. The initial intent was for private owners to assess one another and maintain the sign in surrounding areas. And then, due to several variables, namely the recession and non, you know, commercial activity in the business park, that didn't occur. And so the LLC itself that was responsible for it went defunct, resulting in lack of maintenance and non-operability. And so we've been working for the last eight years to try and unwind the ownership, and ultimately, we're able to get the sign donated to the city last year. So since then, I talked a little bit about this, we've explored several options to refurbish the sign, including the possibility of adding, adding a digital component, but because of the cost, decided that the recommendation was to move forward with a refurbishment. And we received a quote from A Plus Signs, which is included in your packet, which helped us begin to negotiate the leases. So this is what the sign will look like. So we will remove, just going back quickly, we'll remove the business park component here, because we obviously have some, some different tenants. Now repaint the entire sign and reface all the channel letters, replace electrical components as needed, and then we'll include the manufacturing and installation of the new tenant panels, which you see there. Now, the sign has four tenants that have agreed. The top two are Valley Health Team, so the top one is the specific Valley Health Team, and then the second one is advertising their urgent care. The third one is T-Mobile, the bottom, the fourth one is Starbucks, and then Cheyenne's Steakhouse and Lounge is the, the fifth tenant panel. So again, just a little more detail on the leases. Valley Health Team has agreed to a three-year lease with all of their payment upfront. T-Mobile has agreed to a two-year lease with payment upfront. Starbucks has agreed to a two-year lease with payment upfront, and Cheyenne's has agreed to a two-year lease, and they're gonna, they're gonna make monthly payments. In order, if you paid up month upfront, you did receive a discount. So if you paid two, two years upfront, it was a two-and-a-half percent discount on, on the lease, and three years was five percent. So, I'm trying to make this a little bigger. So just from a cost standpoint, you can see the top is city revenue. This is rent-only, doesn't include their security deposit or the costs that they will pay in order to have the sign fabricated and installed. And then our costs annually are there in the bottom, which include the one-time costs of some electrical connection that has to be made, refurbishment of the actual sign, which is from A Plus, and then our, some of our ongoing costs annually. And so it does really keep a fun balance of about $40,000 after two years. And then obviously, we're hopeful that, you know, well, Valley Health Team has a three-year term, but the other ones will re-up, or we will seek, seek new tenants, which I hope not to have to do after this. So our recommendation tonight is that the city council authorize the city manager to execute respective business park leases, pending final, the final lease review by the city attorney, and then ultimately tenant signatures. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I do want to thank Jolene as well who's here this evening, because she bird-dogged a lot of this as well. It was a long, a lot of work, and we got a lot of inquiries as new businesses decided to go into the business park about how they could get on that sign. And we were often faced with the difficult challenge of explaining that we didn't own it, and that we're not quite sure who owned it. And so happy to have some resolution to this. And that concludes my report, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council discussion?
Okay, so Alex, it says, "does not include the aluminum skin to cover the holes from the letters." Is that something that they can give us a quote on, or what's the thought there?
I think their thought is, is they're gonna try and patch it, and then we'll deal with it. So they, that was like an extra, essentially an extra additive. And so we're, we've talked with A Plus, and, you know, I've told them that, you know, it's supposed to look like that when it's done, and they've said that it will, so.
Okay.
So if we have to go that route, then we'll explore it, but I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll be able to patch it without the actual aluminum skin.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank Jolene. I know she did an incredible amount of work on this, and this was brought to her in the Economic Development Committee. And so Alex, I know, has done a tremendous amount of work as well. So thank you to both of you for seeing this project through. I think it's gonna look amazing when it's complete, and I'm really happy that Cheyenne's is up there as well, a local business, so that, great work, Jolene, appreciate that.
That's all.
Yeah, I think it's a great project for our business park to get that sign redone, and then get the businesses up there for their advertisement. Was there a timeframe in, in the staff report? I didn't see it.
Yes, thank you for that. So Christopher A. Plus Signs has been bugging us for several months to get this going. So he wants to start as soon as possible, but he thinks it'll be roughly six to eight weeks once, once they get started. So we have three of the tenant spaces who have executed the lease, and both T-Mobile and Starbucks is just, because they're a larger corporation, it's taking longer for them. You know, T-Mobile has agreed to all the language, and is just waiting for the person to come back, and Starbucks is, is right there as well. So they're just running it through their, sort of their corporate ladder. And so our goal will be to get started relatively quickly, within the next couple of weeks. And then, at least on the painting, that's gonna be the first part, and then hopefully then the signs themselves will be up, you know, with the, with the new fiscal year, so probably early July.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jolene. It's always good when Jolene shows up, because it's always, it's always good news when Jolene's here. So Jolene, if you could come more often, we'd really appreciate it. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, if not, any final discussions, or this is an action item, with the recommendation being to authorize the city manager to execute the business park leases, pending final review by the city attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to our future agenda items, of which we have none, and we will get our city manager's report.
Just a couple of brief items. A reminder that at our next meeting, we will have the Water Rate Study public hearing. So that's where we hold, hold the protest ballot counting. So that, that's on the 21st, two weeks from tonight. And then, you've probably already heard, obviously, the steam engine did not move from Fresno on Monday, so they are working on a new date, but they are tentatively looking at early June.
Okay, we'll move on to council member reports, starting with council member North.
Bid met yesterday. There wasn't a quorum, so no real new business. But they did talk about the ladies' night out that was last week, and they had just over 100 participants, which, after not having it for a while, they felt like that was a good start. Chamber is going to meet on Tuesday. Their meeting times have changed. They are not in the morning anymore. They will be at the second Tuesday at 5:00 in the evening. And then, been talking about this for many months, You Matter is this Saturday, so please come, see what we're doing right out here. doing right out here in front of the council chambers and the next block over. We have 37 booths, and each booth has a service project that only takes a couple minutes to do. So, bring your kids, grandkids, parents, anybody out, and just come see what we're doing downtown in teaching the next generation the importance of giving back to others.
What time is that?
9:00 to 2:00. Setup is from 7:00 to 9:00. Tear down is 2:00 to 4:00. Feel free to come any of those times.
Awesome. Thank you. Council member Smith?
Let's see, the finance committee hasn't met, and the community services hasn't met. But I will remind you, Swedish festival is right around the corner, and that kicks off with Thursday, next Thursday, with the pea soup dinner at 5:30, and the Swedish dinner on Friday night. So, hopefully, you guys can come join us.
Thank you. Council member Sol?
Okay, hang with me. I got a list here today.
We got time now.
Okay, so, economic development committee has not met. The San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control City selection did meet and appointed Mayor Pro Tem Jose Rodriguez to represent, oh, he's from the city of Madera, to represent small cities in our region. The South Kings GSA also met, and they presented a draft budget, the 2025-26 draft budget. Their next meeting is May 14th in Fowler. And couple of local items. So, the car show committee met and did their closing. Thank you to the chamber for putting that, hosting that. They did have a record number of cars. They, they figured there was over 340 cars that actually paid, and then there were some that, that were there that just came, just to be part of the event. Also, notable Hot Rod Garage Show, which is on Motor Trend, gentleman by the name of Lucky Costa from Hot Rod Garage. It's, it's, said that the car show was amazing. He plans on coming here next year and bringing cars, and so that was a really good thing. I guess they're from LA. I didn't, I'm not familiar with them, but apparently, that's a big thing in the hot rod and the car world. And so, that's good. And then, they also had a feature in Hot Rod Magazine, which featured Kingsburg, which I thought was really cool. They wrote an article, and they had, you know, 22 different pictures of cars throughout the car show. And so, the car show is gaining a lot of popularity and is gaining a lot of momentum and is really on the radar and putting Kingsburg, you know, on the map in that arena, right, which is great. We're hitting multiple arenas. Now, we go into Swedish festival. So, all good things. Couple other items, library mixer, the chamber had a library mixer last night, which was great, well-attended. The library's doing some amazing things that, you know, I hadn't been in the library. Forgive me, I don't have little kids, and I haven't been in the library in quite some time. But, you know, they do more than just books now. There's, you know, audio books for people. There's movies. You can rent movies and DVDs. And so, it's not just books. So, it's, it's great. And then, the GSM ribbon cutting. I mean, there was several of us there at that. That was an amazing event, too. Really, almost a community event for ribbon cutting. I mean, they, they really did, you know, shout, shout out to Ryan Diaz and that whole crew and Chamber for putting on that event as well, everybody involved. It was really a nice evening where a lot of the community and residents participated, and it was just a great feel-good and a new business downtown. So, how could you go wrong with that? So, that concludes my report. Sorry if I went long-winded there.
Hey, you're a hard-working man. We appreciate that. Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay, planning commission, the meeting scheduled for tomorrow, the joint meeting, is going to be, has been rescheduled for May 22nd, right, Alex? May 22nd, for, for us, our council also. Public safety, we have not met since our last meeting. SKF was also supposed to be tomorrow, but it's been rescheduled also for May 22nd for SKF. I filled in for Laura a couple of weeks ago at Five Cities Center Point District, and there was, didn't know, we did not have a quorum, so we didn't, we didn't have, we didn't make any actions at that meeting. But there was a presentation. It was given by Gladez Martinez. She's from Fresno Pacific University, and they have a program. It's called Center for Community, Community Transformation. And that, it's a thing they have for businesses. It helps small business. You have to have, to qualify for this. You have to have 50 employees or less. And they are focusing mainly in geographic areas are Ridley, Kingsburg, Salma, Layton, Fowler, Parlier, Carruthers, and Sanger. And they call it, to start that, there's a fee for, I forget what the fee, I forgot to write the fee down, but they, their next launchpad for that is, what they call it, the launchpad for small business. It starts on September 9th, and it's a seven-week program. So, if there's small business here in Kingsburg that, or any of those cities that I've named, are interested in this program through Fresno Pacific University, the next one starts September the 9th. And then, also, we had a, let me get this flyer here. We talked about in that meeting, Central Valley Training Center, which I had no idea about. It's in Salma, and it, it's on building careers and creating possibilities. It's, it's at the Central Valley Training Center in Salma, and it says, "We help prepare for careers in over 10 different trades. In, in a 10-week course, you receive comprehensive and innovative introduction to careers as a bricklayer, carpenter, cement, electrician, ironworker, teamsters, operating engineer." I guess that's for a train, operating engineer, right? Yeah. Can be a locomotive driver, painter, plumber, roofer, and sheet metal, is what, is what I found out, you know, at that meeting. And that's put on by the EDC. And if you, and requirements for this program in Salma, you must be 18 years of, of age and have a valid driver license and ability to pass a drug test. And if anybody's interested, you contact Daniel Oglesby from the EDC. So, that's something I didn't know about, that's in Salma, their training center, you know. So, it was very informative in that meeting, even though, like I said, we had no, made no access.
And it's all free.
And that's all free, yeah, for that. For any, anybody 18 years of age that's looking to.
Catherine Lawler, she works with the Fresno Pacific.
Yes, Kathleen's part of the Fresno Pacific on that Center for Community Transformation, yes. So, Kathleen, if, if anybody's interested from our community, or those communities I named, that you're focusing on, they can contact Kathleen also, yes. Yeah. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. COG and FCRCA, we did meet. It was a very, very late meeting. First, we had the city selection committee. They appointed me as the vice chair of the city selection committee. And the big thing that came up was regarding Measure C. They're really wrapping up their efforts, but there is potentially a countermeasure that's going to be running parallel at the same time by an organization called Transportation for All. They're looking to restructure it. I think if both, if both measures go on the ballot at the same time, there's a virtually no, no chance of success for either one of them. So, there is probably going to be a little bit of a pivot with the way that they've been marketing the Measure C stuff, or if it continues. So, I'd just say, stand by on that one. We're probably going to see some changes with something with that. So, pay attention to that. That's a very, very important measure, whether it's called Measure C, D, E, doesn't matter. It's really just about getting money so that we can fix our roadways here. But again, that, that meeting lasted very, very, very late for that issue. And that's all I have. Do you have any other members of staff or council have anything else?
I wanted to say one more thing.
Yes.
I wanted to thank Kingsburg's coach, because I think that you've coached everybody in town, for spending his 60th birthday here with us at council tonight. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, we're going to adjourn.
All right, thanks.
Happy birthday, Vince.
Thanks.
Good stuff.
Yep, the big, the big six-o.
Six-o.